And then the June 6th Special Meeting Public Work Session of the Port City School Board. I now call this meeting to order. Ash, now please stand for a brief moment of silence. I guess I'll be going over to that.
Thank you so much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May be seated. But now have our admission statement read by Board Member Yolanda Thomas.
The admission of the Portsmouth Public School Division is to engage all students in learning that will foster academic excellence and responsible citizenship.
Thank you so much. Attendance, I'm clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Here.
Mrs. Futrell?
Here.
Mrs. Hines?
Here.
Mrs. Thomas?
Here.
Dr. Whitaker?
Here.
Dr. Patillo?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you so much. I would like to announce that Board Member Cotton is at a work conference this week, and Ms. Boone had a family emergency she had to attend to, so she's not present. Agenda 2.6, approval of the agenda for June 6, 2024. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Move for approval.
Second. Oop. Needed a motion. I was waiting on it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I said, boy, I must not do this.
I am taking a motion.
It's the end of the school year. We understand.
I'm sorry. I had the founders on my mind.
We understand.
I am taking a motion at this time.
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Ms. Duncan Hines. Any discussion?
None.
Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Futrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
Just unanimous. I said, I know I missed a few meetings, but I didn't know you said it either. I was like, boy, maybe they changed.
Agenda item 3.1 is a discussion item for our annual Title I, Title II, Title III, and Title IV grant application. Ms. Hales. And Ms. Hales, you can introduce your staff as well that have come with you on this evening.
Will do. Good evening, Chairman Dr. Patillo, Vice Chair Atkinson, School Board members, Dr. Bracy, and Cabinet members. Good evening, and I am here to present our 2024-25 ESSA applications. But before I do that, I'd like to take this time to introduce my staff, who's half of them are here and half are at the center preparing for an event. But I have the pre-K side with me this evening. Dr. Pat Williams, our pre-K coordinator, Ms. Sharon Bullock, one of our pre-K program specialists, Ms. Diane Deloche, our pre-K program specialist, and Ms. Natalie Brooks. Okay. So this evening, I will be presenting five different applications. Our Title I Part A, which is improving the academic achievement for our disadvantaged students. We have Title I Part D, which supports our neglect and delinquent facility. Title II Part A, which is supporting effective instruction for our teachers and staff. Title III Part A, which is for application for our Ls. And Title IV Part A, which our student support and academic enrichment. I will provide a brief overview during of each of the applications during the presentation. All grant funds are supplemental, which means they cannot take the place of other funds that will be available otherwise. Each grant cycle begins July 1st and runs through September the 30th of the following year. So this grant cycle begins July 1st, 2024, and will end September the 30th, 2025. The allocation amounts that you will see are preliminary, which means they've asked us to use last year's funding allocation amounts until the final allocations are released, usually late spring, excuse me, late summer, early fall, somewhere about September. Sometimes they come in August, most likely in September. All of these, while I am presenting, all of these applications are presented with support from other departments. Our CNI department, which has a lot of support from our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. DeVries, our core content, math and reading, finance, human resources, student services, youth risk, school counseling, research and evaluation, school and teacher quality, with final approval coming from our Chief Academic Officer. I'll first start with Title I Part A, and the preliminary division allocation is a little over $7.1 million. That amount may change. Again, we'll get the final allocation in the fall. And the purpose of Title I Part A is to ensure that all students have a fair and equitable opportunity to a high-quality education and to enclose those achievement gaps. Here's a listing of our Title I schools, as you all remember from last year's presentation. This year, we added Craddock Middle, so there are 13 Title I schools with the addition of Craddock Middle. Our division focus, our measurable objectives included reading and writing, math, our social emotional, which is the discipline part for our, which includes our behavior interventionist, our parent and family engagement, which is a required requirement under Title I Part A. And then last year, we added the teacher quality portion to the application. What we do with our money, we provide instructional supplies and support for with our students. There are online subscriptions. There's tutoring, SOL remediation, stipends for PD, parent and family engagement, human resources, which are the people that we pay for, and the instructional support personnel. And there's also funds set aside for homeless and displaced students through the transportation and resources. Title I Part D, the preliminary allocation is $193,000, which goes to Harbor Point Behavioral Healthcare, the N and D facility. While the funds, Portsmouth Public Schools manages the funds, but the funds go directly to the facility, and my office helps support and provides resources for Harbor Point. And Harbor Point is funded under Title I Part D, Subpart II, and there are three primary purposes for that grant: to improve the educational services for the students that are in a facility, to provide students there mainly with the same resources that they would receive through if they were in a public school setting, and just to prevent the at-risk youth from dropping out of school. And so we work closely with the Educational Director at Harbor Point. How they're using their funds, we pay for subscriptions and site licenses for the facility. This year, they will be purchasing a life skills curriculum, and they do a lot of professional development, which supports the social and emotional learning for the students. This year, their focus is steam, or it says stream, but it's actually stream supplies, SEL materials and supplies, and there's additional instructional materials, art, classroom libraries. They're going to focus on music and physical educational, and they're actually doing some printmaking this year, and they're going to be purchasing some VR headsets. Title II Part A, of course, that grant supports professional development and recruiting high-quality teachers and principals. And that preliminary allocation is about $843. Again, these allocations may change once the final allocations come out in the fall. What we do, we want to prepare, train, and recruit teachers. So Title II funding provides activities that strengthens our instructional leadership and teacher quality within our schools. It also provides a wide variety of professional development activities, including any interventions for professional development that are research-based and scientifically grounded. We do have funds set aside for relocation assistance, as well as sign-in bonuses, and there's also the requirement to do a private school set aside. So we have to provide funds to the private schools under Title II Part A. Title III Part A, Ms. Carrie Hatfield is a coordinator for this grant, which is supporting our L students. We don't get a lot of money, just over $23,000, but in the past, that allocation has increased as our L population has increased. I remember just starting with about $3,000 or $4,000, and so now we're up to almost $24,000 for this particular grant application. And then this grant is merely to support the instruction and support, to provide supplemental support for our L students. Under this grant, they'll have consultants for professional development to improve those best practices for teaching. There are some conferences that Ms. Hatfield has her staff wanting to attend this year, and then we're going to purchase some L and IY materials and supplies. Part of what she's going to use is Validate Me, the Translate Live tablets, word-to-word dictionaries, and some classroom libraries. So we've been, Ms. Hatfield is new to this position, so we've been working very closely with her to get her in the swing of things with the Title III application. Title IV is our student support and academic enrichment program. Our preliminary allocation is $561, 360, a little over $561,000. For Title IV, there are three categories under this grant. It's the well-rounded student, the safe and healthy student, and then promoting the effective use of technology for our teachers and our staff. So for the well-rounded education, we are funding a school counselor. We have a parent and family engagement specialist, and we also provide parent and family engagement funds to our non-Titel, non-Titel I schools. We have three, two, three behavior interventionists that we pay for under this grant, as well as professional development for the effective use of technology. And under Title IV Part A, there's also a set-aside requirement for our private schools. I will backtrack. Next year, we will be going into the process of having to fund private schools under Title I Part A. And so I'll share more about that when I present next year. We're going to have to have a set-aside for our private schools. Previously, they were in bypass with a third-party vendor providing services for them. Well, USED says bypass is going away, so part of our Title I funds will have to go to the private school. So as we get more information about what that looks like for the division, I will be sure to share that information with you.
I should have waited for the last part of that. Okay. I'll come back to it. All right. So again, our applications are due to VDOE by July the 1st. Again, all of the allocation amounts are preliminary, and the final allocations will be released August or September. Now I'll take your questions.
Chair.
She wanted to take our questions.
Oh, queen, I'm sorry.
Who wanted to go though?
My question for Title I was with the, with the private school set aside that comes
with no extra money from Fed, right?
No.
So it's going to come out of our pocket.
Well, they normally take the, what went to the private schools, they took it off of the top, so we didn't see it. So what they're saying is that we will get that money back. So I remember looking at the allocation, and it was about $80,000 that went to the private schools, so that money will come back to Portsmouth Public Schools. But that's a good question.
Okay.
Ms. Atkinson?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Hales. Just want to give you kudos on your department. Always great work, great job. I get compliments about the parent liaison in the school, so they love that. They love the events that they put on and your department. So kudos on that.
Thank you.
Also, just to piggyback on what Sarah said, is that just private schools, or is charter schools included in that as well?
Well, right now, it's just private schools. So anyone that's listed on the state list that's accredited or approved private school, we will have to go find those students that live in Title I attendance areas and service those students wherever they go to school. For example, if you have a child that's, that lives in the Church Lynn Academy Zone, that is a, that is a Title I school. But they go to a private school in Norfolk, that money follows, they say, the money follows the backpack.
Wow.
Yes. So it's, it's going to be an additional work on us, and I'm trying to mentally prepare myself for that. Yeah. So they said the money follows the backpack, whereas with Title II and Title IV, the money goes to the school. So the money doesn't go to the school for Title I. It goes and follows the child and the teacher of the child.
Okay. And then a question regarding, I think, is it Title, yeah, Title I funds. So just like a walkthrough on if a student is, does a student have to be from Portsmouth, or is this an incarcerated student that?
Title I Part D?
Yeah, Part D.
Okay. So the money goes to the facility, and I will say, over the, since we've been providing funds to Harbor Point, there has only been one child that has resided in Portsmouth. So those students may come from anywhere across the United States. So the money goes to the facility. We've had a time working with the facility this year because they really hadn't been spending their money. So I gave her a letter. I gave her a timeframe. This is what I need you to do by this timeframe, and if they don't comply, then we will be able to take the money back and use it within Portsmouth Public Schools, but we'll have to have a plan to do so. So so far, she's, she's working on her objectives that I have given her, but we do have a follow-up meeting in July.
Okay. Yeah, that's what I was going to ask you, as far as like, were they utilizing all of the funds? So if, if, if I'm a juvenile and I'm incarcerated, I can go through Harbor Point and get subscriptions, request assistance, and get those subscriptions free of cost to me?
Well, they, they have to write measurable objectives, and their measurable objectives are for the students as a whole, not necessarily directed towards one particular student.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
With respect to the private school students, do we know right now approximately how many students?
We don't. They've been, VDOE has had several meetings with us. We had a training back in the beginning of May where we went to just for the purpose of talking about bypass and trying to walk us through it. So they've been doing quite a few webinars, and as a matter of fact, we have another one scheduled for June the 17th.
And follow-up questions. So the, so the money that comes back, is that given back if we don't spend that money?
We will spend it.
I know. That's right.
We will spend it.
It's plenty to do.
You're welcome. Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. Excellent job.
Thank you.
So again, on the private schools, to make sure I understand, they, you said bypass is going away, meaning that they, the money came off the top, but now it won't come off the top?
So Virginia was one of the last states to be in what they call bypass. The third-party vendor who used to service the private schools under, they're still servicing and are going to service them this next coming school year. It was Catapult. So USED says, no more bypass. Catapult goes away. We do have the option to still utilize Catapult to do the work for us, but we will have to pay them. So that'll be some discussions that we'll have to have, you know, on our level to see which route we want to take and what's going to be the most cost-efficient, efficient for us moving forward. So we still have another year. So this year, we're starting with the 24-25 school year, we start our consultations. But we've already been in consultations with the private schools for Title II and Title IV. This year, we'll be adding the Title I piece.
Okay. And then also, when you said for, I think you said Title I, the money follows with the child. So if that child is in an, let's say, private school?
Yes.
The money follows them. Do we have any oversight with that, or what's?
We still have to manage what they, what happens with the money. So yes, we will have complete oversight. So it's not like the money is going to the school and the school gets to do whatever. The school has to have a plan. We have to have a plan for how the school is going to, how the money goes and services the child.
And my last question is, if we ever see in the future an increase in students going to private school?
There you go, Leona.
Does the, does the money, like, okay, so the funding, we don't expect them to change the funding.
Unless, well, see, those students would normally be, be going to a private, to a school in Portsmouth anyway, right? So we're, they're already counted in that, that enrollment amount. So the Title I funds is based on the census data from, from the division.
I was just concerned with the, if we saw an influx or increase of students choosing private schools instead of public school, how that impacts?
I don't think the money changes.
Okay.
The money doesn't change.
I was going to ask that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can the private schools turn down money?
Yes. They do not have to participate, whether it be Title I Part A, Title II, or Title IV. They do not have to participate because we have one of the biggest private schools in the city, Portsmouth Christian. They do not accept funds from Portsmouth Public Schools. So the school does not have to participate.
Level to get on. I don't want your little money.
Okay. Love it.
You don't take money. You have your own rules.
Exactly.
Absolutely.
Exactly.
Any other questions or comments from Ms. Hales?
They asked them all.
I did want to also remind everyone that next Thursday, I know we have a meeting, but following our meeting, if you want to stop by, there's Student and Family Resource Event they have at Emily's Farm next Thursday.
Wednesday, the 12th.
It's Wednesday.
It's the 12th.
Wrong day. Okay. It's Wednesday.
We have an event this evening, which is our closeout meeting for our parent advisory and our steering committee, and Port Town Magic will be performing as entertainment.
Very nice. I'll be there next Thursday. Thank you. I know. I'll be there next Thursday.
That's what I'm going.
Yeah, I'm going away. Agenda item 3.3, item 3.2, as rental of school facilities and procedures for that. Dr. White, we talked about that last week, and we gave them the director committee some changes. Adam, he had to make those changes and discuss them with Dr. White, and I believe they became in agreement with those changes with the products committee as well. And we used to take a vote on that this week. So I'm going to have any questions about the white before we entertain a motion.
Who's in charge of it?
Operations.
Okay.
Any other questions? There's not, anten a motion at this time?
Vote for approval.
Second.
Motion made by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Ms. Futrell. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Futrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
Just unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.3 is a roll call vote for contract for 2024 for the rapid notification system. The RFP is in board docs, along with any notes from Ms. Davis and recommendations from the committee. Anten a motion, then we can have discussion if there's any discussion.
Vote for approval.
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Atkinson, second by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Futrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
Just unanimous.
Thank you so much. Agenda item 3.4 is a roll call vote for the GMU contract for band uniforms. I do want to just acknowledge that you will not see Manor High School listed, that we gave them the uniforms with the school name.
Okay.
That's why you're missing the two schools. I just wanted to point that out.
Move for approval.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion by Ms. Hines, second by Vice Chair Atkinson. Any discussion?
All ready.
Seeing none. Roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Atkinson?
Yes.
Mrs. Futrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Hines?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Dr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Dr. Patillo?
Yes.
Just unanimous.
Thank you. Agenda item 3.6 is the agenda review for June 13th, which will be our last meeting of this school year, school calendar year.
Wow.
Agenda is located in board docs. Take a quick look at that, if you haven't seen it.
Thank you.
And of course, if anything needs to be added to the agenda, please let us know. It's a quick turnaround where we can add it for the agenda for next meeting as well.
Can I, can I ask, and it doesn't necessarily have to be, it can go early session, sign replacements at the schools, specifically Simmonds Dale, simply because it's been sitting out there for a while. So where are we and what's the timeline for that?
So I ask that Dr. Brice can have operations or Mr. Faulk at our next meeting, early session, give an update on sign replacements.
Great.
It doesn't need to have added.
No, this is, I'm sorry. I didn't know if we could have an update, if there's been any progress with the CTE Center.
And also as a reminder, I could say it next, but any retreat agenda items, if you, I asked you before, if you have anything, please let me know so we can get that added. I want to give them time to be able to research it, come up what you need to have.
And Chair, I was going to say, if that CTE Center update should wait for the retreat, that's fine too, just if we don't have.
I still need to pull together the, the report.
In our, and I'll bring it up again, and when we go through committee reports, I'd like to have an overview of the curriculum platform. Please remind me the name of it. We talked about it. EduPlanet 21. Yeah. EduPlanet 21. It's a new way that we're rolling out curriculum. It's a new board, and so I just think that we, I would like to see what our teachers are going to see and how, what the interface looks like going into the next year.
Is the retreat?
Yes.
Okay.
Hopefully, they'll have time to have played with it and got some stuff squared away in it.
All right. Another comments in reference to the agenda, I'll move on to 3.7 subcommittee reports. Do we have any reports?
Sure. We had a CNI meeting on Monday. Okay, because my week has been off. Like yesterday was Thursday, today's been Friday, tomorrow should be Saturday. Y'all have those weeks too, right? It's not just me. All right. So I have two pages of notes, so it was a very busy meeting, and I don't really want to hit on all of it. But I show this to say, while it was a busy meeting, that's, that just means that curriculum and instruction have been doing their job of curriculum and instructing. And so I just, I just want to give them kudos because we are coming to the end of the year, and we all are coming to the end of our frazzled ropes. And these lovely people and our lovely staff are already looking forward to next year and putting plans in place and laying that. So we talked about having the dual brain and living in two different worlds. So we do have a senior, or we had a senior art expo last night from 5:00 to 7:00. And field days are on the calendar, weather permitting. So hallelujah, get them outside, let them go play, have a good time. The dual-language immersion program, we are good to go on all the teachers that we need for that program. And so we are meeting with principals and doing information sessions in the next week or so, especially with our rising kindergarten students, so we can get them in. We have our middle school entrepreneur program with NSU for the summer. It's a two-week camp. One week will be in-house, and the other week will be there. We're looking at 45 students for that. We also have our summer internships that are up and running. We've got 45 positions available, and there were 120 applicants for the middle school entrepreneur program. Um, and field days are on the calendar, weather permitting, so hallelujah, get 'em outside, let 'em go play, have a good time. Um, the dual language immersion program, we are good to go, and all the teachers that we need for that program. And so we are meeting with principals and doing information sessions, um, in the next week or so, especially with our rising kindergarten students, so we can get them in. We have our middle school entrepreneur program with NSU for the summer, it's a two-week camp. One week will be in-house, and the other week will be there, we're looking at 45 students for that. We also have our summer internships that are up and running, we've got 45 positions available, and there were 120 applicants for the middle school entrepreneur program. So, um, it's there, it, it, it's, it's moving, it's growing, and so that's the way that we want it to go. Um, we did have a CTE signing day where we had 20 students that were signed, um, with their careers going out. And we have seven students at the Governor's School for the Arts, um, as well, so all of these are things that we've talked about. Um, and I did mention, um, to Dr. DeVries and, and team about, um, while we have a CTE signing day and while we have athletic signing days, what do we do for our military kids that are going straight into the military, you know, so that, 'cause that's a career choice as well.
They signed it, they signed it.
Okay, great, um, so we talked about that, and they told us that. I think the one that I like them, I mean, I love them all, don't get me wrong, but the one that's nearest and dearest to my heart, and simply because, for those of us that have been around for a while, um, we understand what this means, um, but it's 39 co, early college graduates from TCC this year.
Yes.
Thirty-nine of our students, uh, finished with their bachelor's program. We had 172 students that were enrolled in first college, and 39 students this year, uh, were able to get there, the past couple years of work to get their, um, their associate's degree. So, yeah, so, um, pre-K, if you know people that are looking for pre-K, we've got 288 slots filled, we have almost 500 that we can fill, meaning that we're a little over halfway there. So, um, we still have about 100 and, or 200 and some odd slots, math is not my thing, y'all, so. We've got 288 of 497, so we got about 200 slots. Um, and as Dr. DeVries and, and team said, uh, they will come in later, you know, but the sooner we can get 'em in, the easier it is to plan for 'em. Um, and there is a bike giveaway, June 12th, next Wednesday, um, not Thursday, right, that's what we were just talking about. Um, and we also have our National Board Certification Teacher Program up and running, so we've got a cohort for this year, we have a cohort coming in, uh, next year as well. Um, and in our summer professional development catalog, there's 159 courses in there, uh, for that. So our teachers have a variety of things, and they're all optional. Um, and then for our instructional tech PD, which is always, I think, the most funnest, if funnest is a word, but it's gonna be a word right now, funnest. Um, uh, 200 and, I don't know if I wrote 277 or 227, um, but registration closes tomorrow, and that will take place on June the 18th. So, um, with all of that, that's what we are, I say we, as a committee, that's what we talk, but they're doing the heavy lifting, and they're doing the work. So, um, just to put all that out there, so. Yep.
I just wanted to add on to Sarah, I was not at the meeting on Monday, but I was at the CTE signing day. And from the, this past signing day that happened last week, it seems like a month ago, but last week to the one previous, there was almost a, a double 50% increase in students actually going into industry. So I think that we are really headed in the right direction with our CTE program. And then I had a question for, from something that Sarah just mentioned in my mind. Oh, regarding the DLI, dual language immersion program, you said you're all straight on teachers, and the next step is having those meetings with the principals and who else?
So we are, hopefully, fingers crossed, all straight on teachers. Uh, we've got some letters of intent out there, and, and so, um, we're, we haven't officially signed, but it's looking good, better than it has in the past. Um, I'm meeting with the principals tomorrow morning, but we have, we have meetings, and, um, just to talk about logistical stuff. There's a parent information night next Tuesday at 6 o'clock, um, I could send out the link if you'd like to attend, you're more than welcome to. We put, um, we advertised it, um, yesterday, no, today, it went home to all pre-K families, um, a flyer with a QR code for registration, and didn't say much on the flyer, except that we're starting this program, and all PPS kindergarteners are, are welcome to, to apply and attend an information session, um, next Tuesday night. And I think Lauren is sending out an alert na, a message, um, tonight to the pre-K families, basically saying the same thing with the same, so we're trying to.
Also, if they're not able to attend the information session, what is our other method to get the information?
So I'm going to record it.
Okay.
Um, just so that, you know, and then we will, we could, we could, I, I could work with Lauren to figure out how we can get that on our website, or we can send something out, or.
And there's a custom DLI website now that went up this morning, so that gives a little more information about the program, and that's, that video would go, him and him right there. And then stu, and they can apply to get into the lottery from the website or.
And that's on our website now? Okay, thank you, Lauren, thank you.
Yes, page 12, you look forward slash DLI.
Go ahead, Karen.
Thank you.
Vice Chair.
Thank you, Chair, uh, this is for, uh, Board Member Heinz. Um, it seems like it was discussed in your committee meeting that 45 students had already enrolled because of, because the parents were still sending me messages that they didn't receive any information on their enrollment.
I'm gonna push that to the team.
Got you, so were students identified versus all students having the opportunity to apply for the internship? Because I thought we said that it would be open to all students to put in.
Are we talking about the internship or the camp?
The, the internship for the, the, the five, the $5,000.
So, yeah, so the internship experience was, um, I know that Mr. Hill and his group went out to each high school to provide information through the counselors, and I believe through the CTE classes, um, especially the entrepreneurship class. Um, and then from there, they put out the application process, and that's where we got the 120 applicants. But we had 120 applicants, but only 45 seats, so across the three schools, there were 120 applicants. And then they chose 45 students.
Gotcha.
So they're, they might still be in the process, I know HR is working with, um, is working with Mr. Hill and his group to get, because they're being paid to get all of that squared away, and working with the, the, um, organizations that are going to sponsor those, those interns.
So this was communicated to all students?
That's what I was.
Or students were identified that were in the entrepreneurship program?
I think students throughout the CTE programs were, that's where the information went, to students throughout the CTE programs.
Got you, so if you weren't a CTE student, you didn't have the opportunity.
I can find out for sure how that, that was, but I believe that's how he, that's who he went and spoke in front of. I don't know if the actual application went out to all students, I don't know how that got advertised.
I guess, I guess my concern on that is more so, I think with, with any program, the exposure piece, because although you're not currently enrolled in a program, just that exposure could give you that. You can gain interest from that, so I, I thought that it would be open to all students. And then the, um, I guess the, Dr. Brice wants, I wanna do my committee update.
Yeah, he, he wants to chat on that.
Okay, to answer the question, you reached out to me, Ms. Atkinson.
Yes, sir.
Um, I spoke to Mr. Malachi, um, about that specifically, and it, as Dr. DeVries said, it was, um, initially targeted, CTE specifically, started with the career investigation classes, which is part of CTE, because that was, um, I guess part of the progression, um, from being in the class and going into the internships. After that, it would have, it was opened up to all students, uh, to have an opportunity. Now, I don't know if it made it to the point of all students being, um, having an opportunity to apply, but it was, since we put the grant together through the CTE, following the CTE model, that's how it started with that group. And I was there, I presented to the, um, Portsmouth Chamber, um, earlier this week, and one of the businesses was in there. And he made a comment as to the, the students that, that we had, that was part of the program last year. He felt that those students were prepared, he said he could tell the initial, um, content was there from the, from the classroom, natural progression when it, when they came onto the job, so they didn't, it wasn't like they didn't have any of the experiences. So that's why we went that route first, to give them that opportunity. But then, and I don't know if it was, as I said, opened up to everyone, because maybe those students in the CTE, um, class, that class or that program took advantage of, of all of, all of it.
So based on, based on what you're saying, it was specific criteria that we put in place on the back end to where we didn't. All students?
I don't think it was, it wasn't any criteria, uh, on the back end, I think it was, it was, it was taken through the CTE program. So I don't know if that, when we, when we were talking about it, I think that's, we had to figure out a way to, there's always a, a screening process if you're gonna look at the students, the resumes, the, the, the level of work. So I, we, we, when we put it together, they felt that which students would be better prepared for the opportunity. And they felt that those kids that actually went through that, went through that program, they wrote ahead, businesses come in and talk to them about, um, the do's and don'ts and what to expect. So that's why we, we went that particular route.
Okay, so, so I, I guess more so from an equity issue, it, I.
I, I kinda see where Ms. Atkinson is going, because, um, some students may have experience, for example, from working on their own, not necessarily through CTE. Um, that may have also been good candidates. So, um, I guess my question at this point, do we have any money to?
To add to it. We can look in, we can look, yeah, we can look into that, see.
That's, that's basically what I was trying to ask Dr. Whitaker, because it could be a student that worked at Chick-fil-A or Taco Bell. I mean, Chick-fil-A has a, a great training program, but they're not in CTE, that could have been a good candidate for the program, um, so.
We can look, and I guess the, the piece to that is, we just, we just need to make sure that we have the, the business partners that are available to take the students, and we come up with the money. So, yeah, we can do that, we'll look at that, we'll have you all, we'll check with Mr. Hill tomorrow, and then if that's the case, approximately how many, and Mr. Falk and I can see if, what type of funding is needed, and, and, you know, we'll proceed with that. Yeah, that, that shouldn't be a, a problem, we can, as you said, open it up for everyone.
Thank you, Dr. Brice.
You're welcome.
Um.
Notice her baby.
I guess a question on that, um, because I guess the parents will ask, is, it'll probably be, um, they'll probably receive this information, are they gonna, it's, it's not gonna be one lump sum, they're gonna be paid on our pay periods?
Yeah, I think it's that. I think it's four payments.
Okay, got you.
So we'll break it up, it, it's not exactly the same for the four, but I think they'll get paid four times between the time in the summer to the end of that cycle.
Okay, okay. And just a final, since we're on the entrepreneurship.
Keep going.
You have another education question?
Yes, but stop after.
I was gonna, I was gonna go into my committee report, 'cause it's basically on the same line.
I have a little more question, um, that I forgot to ask, Dr. DeVries. Um, for the informational session, will we, do you have something that can provide us more information about like what our final model is for DLI? And what it will look like, so that, you know, when we talk to the public or have questions, we can answer that as well?
We have a brochure and what.
Is that on the website? 'Cause I haven't looked at the link. Is that all on the?
I'll make sure, no, I don't think the brochure is, I can get you.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, uh.
And the website will, will tease that all out too.
Okay.
I was gonna ask for that early session, we got a brief overview, so I, I would wanna know, uh, how we're gonna implement it and what model we're gonna be using.
Absolutely.
Uh, and how it's gonna fit in our, in our demographic of students.
Okay, so, um, for the MWBE committee, um, the feedback on the entrepreneurship and employment center was that, um, the consensus of the board is that we wanted to work with Portsmouth-based churches, um, and not any on the peninsula side. So before, um, the committee moved forward, we just wanted to make sure again that the board was in agreeance with, um, Reverend Dr. Jerome Barber of Sixth Mount Zion Baptist Temple, and Reverend Joseph Fleming of Third Baptist Church, um, to be the youth entrepreneurship and employment center.
Oh, we, we didn't, you said Portsmouth churches, right?
Right.
Yeah, he, he's not in Portsmouth.
He's not a Portsmouth church? So I thought.
That first name.
And I'm mixing him up with the other pastor, Jerome?
Messing him up with Williams.
Yeah, Dr. Jerome.
Yeah, okay, so we need another Portsmouth church.
New Testament.
Okay, so.
That was the consensus, I thought. I thought we had gone back and.
I thought we'd gone back and said that we was gonna do a peninsula slide, but.
I thought so too.
I, I don't remember us going back saying that, I think that was one of the main issues that, that was being had, was, uh, that we was on some bit of peninsula.
So we're, okay, so he's on the peninsula, so we're not in agreeance with Sixth Mount Zion Baptist Church? Is that, was that, I'm trying to recall what.
Yeah, I think that was changed since we did it last, I talked about last time.
I'm sorry, I thought that, um, because of the grant and the way that you guys had it designed or it was written, that because the money was from that side, that we were putting something over there because of that, was that not it?
I thought, I thought so too. That's how the grant was written.
That it was written specifically because money was coming from the other side of the water, and then this side, so we were doing one on each.
Coming from other side of the water?
Well.
Their, their representatives.
Some kind of way the language was.
On the bill, or something like that, and they assisted.
I mean, I don't recall it changing that, but.
Okay. I can remember. I can't remember, I remember that coming up though, that that was an issue, and that, um, we wanted it to be on this, everything to be on this side. I just couldn't remember what the final.
So the language the, the grant was written and subsequently funded, um, was with Sixth Mount Zion. And then we said, to make it fair, in some way, we would add a Portsmouth church to have representation.
That's what it was, that's what it was.
And I think the issue was that, when we read it, we said that why would we, as a Portsmouth, a Portsmouth division, you know, set up to do anything, uh, out of this city?
Yep.
You know, that, I mean, I think that's what, that's what the heartburn was.
I remember that.
I, I guess, yeah, I understand that, but we, we use Portsmouth Division school money to, um, get contracts from businesses outside of Portsmouth.
Right.
Outside of Virginia.
Right, through, through IRP process, right, we do.
Right.
Uh, but, and speaking of a grant, I thought it'd been more proper, and I think we talked about this, if we were gonna be doing some support, a peninsula community or peninsula church, then it should have been done either with the city, a regional effort, you know, but not from Portsmouth Public Schools to fund a program in another city, it, it just didn't even sound right when we discussed it.
So this is the last, this is the last thing I'm gonna say about it. That the, the church on the peninsula, um, provided services, um, Portsmouth Public Schools use the space for the, you know, the program, the MWBE program, use their space over there, um, for years.
Why, why?
Without.
I mean, I mean, why?
Having to pay, right.
Yes, I, I guess my question would be, why would we need to use their, their facilities for use, we have facilities here, it's like. And I didn't know we were using our facilities over there, I mean, I guess that's above my pay grade, but, um, yeah, I, I don't know why we would.
That was before this one?
Well, and, and I just wanna, and I, I just, I'm, and I'm a full believer of the program, and I think every division should have it.
Correct.
But I don't think, just because we're the only one that's been bold enough to approve having the program, I don't think it's meant for us to use, uh, the localities, it's meant for, to benefit our school division.
Right.
You know, and, I mean, based on my understanding of the program in the way it was written originally.
When we discussed last time, we were talking about that component, right, for the location of the churches.
Yeah.
Serving the benefit, uh, providing, I guess, training for businesses to get MWBE, like, certified, or to go through the process, right? So I, I do understand that we are using other businesses outside of Portsmouth when we go through our IRP process. But I do think for this initial, um, pilot, it, if there are other businesses on the peninsula, then they should be able to come over to this side to get training, to kinda do business with Portsmouth, just like similar, um, like with. like with cities that want to implore businesses to do businesses or, you know, be on contracts. They hold that informational session within their city. Um, so I think just right now, they could be just in Portsmouth.
So we need to, before we move forward with the Entrepreneurship and Employment Center, we need another center for Portsmouth? Is, is that what, is that?
That's the component of the grant. I'm just trying, is that, that's like the what, the component of the grant to have a community training center, okay?
I just wanted to get that standing. I said, why would we need to have another training center?
That's, that's what I'm asking. Do we need another center, or can these funds be allocated towards something else?
According to the, the code we had, they were reallocated to, it was written to where it was just for that Portsmouth training center.
It was still two in the, uh, final component. It was still two.
For two Portsmouth churches? Because, because it, it never was supposed to be a one, for that's what.
Two centers. Two centers.
No, I, I just wondered where it changed. I, I remember the, the presentation, the final presentation, and it was.
I mean, I don't wanna be, I just, I just needed to know.
No, I know.
So we can move forward. I, I just.
I still have one more question. How did we select, even if it's in Portsmouth, this might open up a can of worms, but how do you?
Don't ask it.
Okay, I'm gonna ask.
I think you were gonna ask how were the churches selected, so these churches that were selected actually advocated enrichment.
So they were part of the grant.
They were part of the grant, yes. Okay, I guess we need to figure out what we're gonna do as far as the, the, because it was, uh, what I'm looking at is, it was a total of, uh, forty-four thousand annually, with twenty-two thousand each for a three-year period for two centers. That was the last, um, component, um, of that. So it was funds allocated for two centers. But I get what you're saying. It's not gonna be, no need for another center if we already have one in Portsmouth.
I mean, that, that could be twenty thousand to go to four, four more kids that.
Right, that's what I said. Do we wanna reallocate those funds to go towards the kids?
I think that would be smart, and we're talking about getting more kids involved in the program.
And that's why I was asking, did we just wanna move those funds somewhere else?
Nah, I think that would be.
The children.
I mean, I think that'd be a good thing, but that'd be a staff, uh, thing, but we gotta approve the program, so.
So, yeah, this, that came back for us to see what was going on with this from our committee. So, yeah, we approved the program, but.
I mean, being that it was agreed to have a, a center in Portsmouth, I think since we already chose to have one in Portsmouth, the other ones could evaporate back towards students, uh, give more students opportunity.
How quickly do we need to have this implemented to not lose the grant funds for the center?
I'd ask that.
It's a two, it's a two-year, uh.
Three-year.
Three-year.
This was first year.
So first, we've already missed a year, okay. Did you miss me?
We haven't missed a year yet. The kickoff would be coming up.
Yeah, the kickoff on the twenty-second. Okay, so I guess I need to take something back to the committee so we can move forward. So I, I guess I, I need to know from the board, like, what are we doing?
I mean, I, I mean, I've seen how, how I thought it should be a, and most of the ones were chiming in on it.
Hard challenging.
Oh, okay.
I think we all have.
I mean, I, it reports with schools, it not, it's schools. It's for the benefit of the kids. It's for.
It's not for the kids. This is for the businesses. So this is the business component.
Again, I'm gonna say we're schools. We can, we can support businesses. We can't drive business. I don't think that's our, I don't think that's our job. So what we can do to support the businesses that support us in Portsmouth, great, wonderful. Um, but I would, I would like to see it stay here.
The Entrepreneurship Center for the businesses?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, gotcha.
We already did all that.
Okay, so cute.
I don't know.
Because who's running this? Who's running the financials?
Who's my what?
Who's the, who's the head person on this? Is this Miss Davis?
My only question was just to make sure that it wasn't an issue where we would be in trouble per se or have to send up anything to have to prolong this and the kids end up missing out because of that. So if that's not the case, then why not?
I think she asked a question.
Oh, no.
I don't know what she's saying.
I said, you are doing.
Yeah, we all, I think he was asking a question.
No, Jolanda was asking me something. I was just kind of responding to that. Um, I'm good with it being in Portsmouth as long as there's, there's no repercussions on our end.
With the grant.
With the grant is, is the only thing, because I don't really know that, that backend of that, what that looks like. Where you've already said one thing and now we're saying something else. Or did we already say that and it's fine?
Before we, before we voted on this months ago, Mr. Falk got the opinion from VDOE.
Okay.
On a program that was presented.
Okay.
It was never mentioned after that presentation, if we're gonna do anything with anybody outside of Portsmouth.
Okay.
That's coming back now.
Got it.
That's where we were.
Okay, well, let's stick to what we said. Let's go.
Over here now, what happened?
So any other reports?
Yeah, I mean, but I think everyone, our budget of finance pretty much really nothing new to report, Mr. Falk. So, yeah, except for, I think you said the, I think every, we already talked about the three-point one. Oh, never mind. I think we already talked about everything already within our budget and city council.
Jolanda, you're making reporting crack.
I'm sorry, I got one with it.
I was about to pull up my notes, so I won't, I'm sorry, I'm confused myself. That's what I'm trying to do.
So, um, just a question for the board. Um, Bloom has partnered with a program, um, that would, um, be in addition to the youth for the entrepreneurship program, where the kids could come in on a specific day and get some additional training. And I sent that information to Dr. Bracy. That additional funds could possibly, uh, fund that Bloom program for the kids. And that's strictly for the youth where they would go there one day, one day a week. So is, is that something, since it seems like everybody wanted to be like kid-centered, that we can consider that program at Bloom for that one day for the summer?
One, one day?
The Bennett Center? I think the Bennett Center, one that I sent you at Bloom.
It was more the.
It was, it was more the one there?
Yeah, I have the, you passed the question to me. We reached out to the, the person, the contact person a while back, several weeks ago. Um, haven't been able to connect with them yet, but, um, I have to look at it, because I do have all that information. So I'll look, I'll take a look.
Gotcha. So since we, we would have that extra funding, is that something that the board would want us to look into? The summer program at Bloom, they would go there, whatever it is, to use that funding for the kids?
That, that's not a board decision.
Okay.
That, that's a.
So how would the churches a board decision?
That was a, that was a. Because that, because, because that was a grant that was written.
Yeah, it's funding.
Right, and that had to be filtered through the school division.
Right, but that's the same thing. We changed the grant, so we're, that's, we had to get the consensus of the board to change the grant, so.
I, I just made sure I understand. So is the Bloom supposed to be a part of the entrepreneurship grant? Don't you say?
It's a, it's a, it's a program that could be added to the entrepreneurship grant as far as where the kids can get training. So training is a component under the entrepreneurship grant for the kids.
So, 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 so we're talking about adding something else to the grant?
So you're saying the twenty-two thousand.
Right.
Use that to.
For additional training.
Training for kids.
I thought we'd be using that to, to add more children.
So that would.
Okay. I think we'd be going off the rails with this.
We are, because I'm confused, because we, because we got a consensus to approve a change, but then we said.
No, 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 we didn't, no, you were asking for consensus. I never asked for one. We already approved that program months ago. And when we approved it months ago, we did not include any church outside of Portsmouth. You just came back tonight with a letter saying, hey, you wanna know up to who this church we put, we never included that church when we approved it the last time. So that, 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 that wasn't a consensus for that, because we already talked about that. Now, the Bloom thing is something totally different, but we, but again, that would be, if there's more training to change the grant again, that's another conversation. But then the peninsula church was never included and not approved the last time.
Right, so what I'm saying is, we just said possibly the twenty-two could go towards maybe four students, so.
Right, because that's already a part of the grant.
Right, and training is a part of it.
Paying students to five thousand dollars was a part of the grant already.
Right.
So, again, that's something that staff could do, because they're managing the money.
Right, and training is a part of the grant, too.
And my point, you guys made, no, I just said to you, that is a staff decision, because they're already managing the money. And you said, well, how, we made enough, we didn't make any changes. If training is already a part of the program, if they choose to use a train at Bloom, at Chick-fil-A, or anywhere else, it's already a part of the program and they can do that. That's what I was saying. I said that that wasn't a board decision to do that. We've already approved that. And if they're not making.
That makes sense.
Any sense.
I defer.
I know, I'm not saying you defer, I'm just, and I, I do wanna be understood. I'm just, I'm just make sure that.
I defer. I mean, that's it.
Okay. Do we have any other reports or anything?
Good for tonight, thank you.
That's a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Have, have they, it's been going out to the parents about the earlier start, about something that we're continually running?
We should. Could be Lauren?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Multiple texts, and then we'll, we'll do another one for our back-to-school issue.
Okay.
Are, do we have funds to send out mailers regarding that, early start? Do we gotta get the consensus of the board to send that out? I'm, I'm not being funny. I'm just.
No, because that, that's a staff, that's a staff decision, not a board.
We can make a recommendation and they can see what they can do. I mean, I think that's what y'all were trying to get at with the money with theirs.
I think so.
Is if there's extra money tied up, if there's extra money that's now available, because we're not doing it to another church, then your recommendation would be to look at this, to use the extra money for, and that's what I heard. And I think if we send it, I think I would like to see the calendar sent out with report cards. Do we send out report cards still in the mail?
I don't.
Yes?
I, I think so.
Can we send out? Yeah, do, do we get report cards in the mail at the end of the school year?
Oh, at the end, yeah.
At the end of the year?
We get that one on, yeah, that one on.
Okay, can we send out a copy of the calendar for next year in the report card mailer?
That's done, that's done by each school. Report cards go out, not at the division level.
Okay.
So we can make that right.
Okay. Hey, way to finish out this school year as you look. Here's next year's calendar.
Any, any other comments? All right, thank you all so much. Mean as rain.